Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Mike, would you please lead us in further allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda.
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Yannus, thank you. Okay Kelly, we have a presentation?
Yes, folks, I'd like to welcome Nicole Patterson this evening. She's going to be spending some time talking about her senior project. The feedback that I've received was incredibly done and it certainly made a significant impact on our student body, so welcome Nicole.
Hello.
Hi Nicole.
The project I did for my senior project is called "Every Fifteen Minutes", and basically every fifteen minutes, somebody passes away due to alcohol-related collision. So throughout the school day, the week before prom, we simulated that during like classes, where we pulled students out every fifteen minutes, either arresting them for OUI and killing their friends or teachers, and then we pulled students out as if they had passed away, and we read obituaries to their classmates for them. And then at the end of the day, we had a whole mock car accident with two cars. CBK towing had donated to us, and they were all smashed up, and we put my health teacher, Mrs. Perry, in one car, and four students, Brooke Raseffa, Steph Gentili, and Erin Kish, and Emily Sterns, in the other, and simulated as if the two cars had crashed together. And Emily Sterns was our drunk driver, and the fire department, police department, and ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, came down and reenacted a whole crash scene as if like it actually happened, and took all the students and teachers out of the vehicles and backboarded everyone, and arrested Emily Sterns for the OUI. And that's what we did. We had an assembly the next day to discuss everything, where we had guest speakers from the police department, Officer Corry and Officer O'Donohue, come in and speak about their personal experience with OUIs and losing people in their family. And then that was the most touching part, I think, for all the students, and I think it really made an impact on all the other kids at my school from the feedback I got. And that's it.
Excellent. Don't look away.
Okay.
We're going to actually show segments of the video that was made of the day, and it's really quite fascinating, they had four cameras running, so it gives you quite a reality check, so to speak, when you can see all of this action happening in different areas.
We ready? All set.
Alex, Alex, we need help up here, there's a really bad car accident, we need help!
Alex, Alex, we need help!
I found one of the hot water blocks, it's broken, I can't move.
Okay, you said the bathroom, I'm sorry.
There's two models, there's a lot of people hurt.
Oh, you're right, who's there?
Um, there's Ethan and one child, they're looking like they're in here, there's Peter, Peter, one teacher, and Adam.
Okay, Adam, is anybody walking out?
No, no, hurry up, we need help!
Okay, now, don't look away, just stay in line with me, oh, don't look away, I'm trying to release fire.
Thank you.
Hello? Hello? My baby! Stop! Eric? Brett? Help! Stop! Come on, stop, take care! Eric? Yeah? Brett? Are you all right? Is everything okay? Is your mom there? Who's this? That's Stephanie? Stephanie's not answering, she's in the back, one of the front, I'm sorry. I can't go, hurry up! Is anyone there? Okay, man, there's a help on the way, okay, just stay right where you are, try not to move, okay? How old are you, Meredith? Thirty-three, thirty-three? We are with you, okay? You don't remember? Okay.
Okay? What happened?
Seven. How many ones gone are you married? Seven?
Who calls on her?
If you know, if you know, pregnant.
How much do you want?
It happened, no? No?
I will, give what you need, that's what you want.
Do you not remember what happened? They'll be right here, okay, Meredith? In that consciousness.
[unintelligible]
And with medical problems, in front, you have to get physical, and medication. Okay? And all of the time, it's a process, okay? Once you're on, you can be together, but just one side. Okay, my face is in, it's a minute, side to side, all I want to do is...
Hang tight, that's the magician all coming, okay? Hey Brian, you had a chance to run by the medicine room there, you've been working video seven months, alright? Let's make a quick comment for us. Alright?
Alright.
Lights, please.
Let everybody watch the rest online. Questions? Questions?
A question is a comment, very powerful.
Thank you.
Hope that was effective for the students.
From what I've heard back from all the students, it definitely made an impact on everyone.
I just wanted to comment, what you don't see in the video is there's 200-plus students on the other side of the fence watching, and during that entire time that students were outside, you could hear a pin drop, listening to everything that was going on. Okay, this is the first I'm seeing of the film, and it's fantastic to be able to see the four views at the same time. In addition, the second day, when we, when Nicole had the presentation in the auditorium, there was 420 people in there, and you could hear a pin drop the entire time, so it was very impactful for students, I didn't hear anything other than positive comment. I do want to make sure that while we, Nicole has said thank you over and over to all the people that helped, but we need to say thank you to Nicole, who spent many hours putting this together. She came to the office in September, asking if it was okay to do this, and she worked all year to put that together, and in fact, the first day that we were going to do the mock accident, the park in the lot, it rained, and she was very disappointed, one because it rained, and two because she just wanted it over with, but if we had put it off for another week, but she really did do an excellent job, so I want to publicly thank Nicole.
Thank you.
You know, the organization to make this event happen is fascinating, I mean, the contacts that you had to make Nicole, and get everybody coordinated, and you know, make sure that they were able to be released from their regular duties to make this happen is phenomenal, so thank you so much for bringing such a powerful presentation to the high school.
Thank you.
The whole video is about 20 minutes long, so we encourage people to watch it online.
It is going to show at 9:00 PM, beginning tomorrow night, and running through next Thursday evening on Comcast Channel 8 and on Verizon Channel 38, it's about 20 minutes long, and you'll see the whole thing tomorrow evening.
I was going to ask about the coordination that you had to do, and you did all that coordination?
Detective Fernandez helped a lot with some of the contacts, but I tried.
No, you succeeded.
He succeeded.
You succeeded, that is very, very, very well done, and it's good for adults too. So we've heard, you know, that the students were mesmerized, I think you saw probably everybody in the room here was mesmerized also, watching that, and that it is available on Littleton TV, you know, a lot of adults are going to get to see that too, and it's going to be impactful, so you've done, our community, a very, very good service, and I want to applaud you. You're never going to know directly, perhaps, but you saved a kid's life, maybe an adult too, and they watched this over the long haul, so well done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well done Dad. Thanks for helping Fernando too. Okay Kelly, we have a field trip?
We do, my favorite park.
And that would be?
Canobie. And the information is in your package, very self-explanatory, middle school principal will be coming a little later on tonight, he has another commitment right now, so I would appreciate a motion to approve, since it's an out-of-state trip, as per policy.
Anybody have any questions, if Kelly? On the trip?
No.
Certainly used to it by now. How was it when you guys went?
I didn't know.
What grade is this one?
Grade six.
Did you go on this one?
Oh, I haven't heard about this one in my house yet. Better for, yes.
Wait, did they ask you for the money?
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay, let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the grade six trip to Canobie Lake Park.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Posed? Yannus, thank you. Alright, interested citizens?
Do I wait till the end? I'll wait till the end.
Okay. Okay, Kelly, acknowledgements.
First on our list of acknowledgements this evening is Chloe, and I understand that Chloe's time with us is soon coming to an end, and Chloe will be moving on to whole secondary interests, so to speak, and this is our opportunity, Chloe, to say thank you for being part of our committee during the year, really appreciated your contributions and your willingness to stay with us during late hours of the night, I knew you had assignments and homework and other things that you probably should have been doing, and your contributions have been very valuable, and we've enjoyed having you, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blanchard.
Might step up Chloe, come on, up front, yeah, let's get you on TV.
I'm a boring, okay.
Because it is a lot of extra work, we know that, you have to prepare for this, we know you have school activities, school studies and everything, and you've done very, very well, you brought good material of information to us, you've contributed to the discussion, and we really want to present you with the plaque, and what it says, recognition, Chloe L. Schelfert, High School Representative to the Littleton School Committee, 2013-2014.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Put the book here. Get the handkerchief. Hold the card, there you go. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Come to the other side.
Thanks Chloe.
Chloe, where will you be off to the fall?
Oh, Bennington College in Vermont.
Yay! Have you taken a study yet?
Um, I want to do like art education, or like maybe work with like public radio or something, I don't really know yet.
If you decide to teach, you can always come back.
It's true, yeah.
Thank you, and certainly good luck.
Thank you.
Our second acknowledgement this evening is the Henry Vincent Cooper Charitable Foundation. They gave a generous donation to our high school, a thousand dollars, to be used toward the purchase of physics equipment, very much appreciated, it certainly will go to good use, as we all know, our physics teacher is forever looking for new ways to do business, and is always searching for best practices, so we're all excited and can hardly wait to see exactly what ends up in the lab from the purchase, so again, thank you for the donation.
And it's been an enduring series of donations from the Cooper Foundation, certainly, they've been very, very generous to the school, and the trustees that are out there, you see them in the community, we should thank them also, so, and certainly, that Mr. Cooper thought to set up a foundation like this so many years ago. Hold on. Okay, old business, high school King Street intersection, as folks may recall, we did communicate, well, the communicate's usually a two-way street, but this, we wrote a letter to the Mass Highway, certainly, there's been some work out by the high school, not to a level that I personally feel, and I think as a committee feels, sufficient yet, so we're proposing, folks, is that we reengage, after having seen some other schools, high schools along state highways here in the Commonwealth, with better signage, better restrictions, reduced speed limits, the irony is when you come in from air, just before we get to the school zone, there's the 40 mile an hour speed limit sign, so in other communities, on state highways, it seems to work, perhaps we can petition Mass Highway one more time, and see if we can simulate, at least to slow the traffic down as it's going by the high school. Anybody want to add anything?
So, what construction are they doing along that road? It looks like they're putting sidewalks in, or it would have been nice if they had mentioned that they have other ongoing projects in their correspondence back to us, and what strikes me is, is they're putting that in, and yet not making any accommodations for the high school crosswalk.
The work ends right at St. Anne's, it doesn't go to the high school, the high school...
They just repaved in front of the high school, like, three months ago or something, they're next, oh, that's a different project?
No, it's actually the continuation.
You could look at that way.
It just wasn't finished, no, that's what I was told, it's the continuation to finish that to the bridge.
Pointing out the irony of...
It's not lost on us. One thing I noticed, I was driving by Neshobatech the other day, and I noticed that they have a school, say, you know, that flashes during school hours, now, I'm not sure if it's still in use, or if...
It is.
So, you know, where did we get one?
Middlesex Regional, Grand Council, just near two, Westford.
And these are, these are high school students, just like ours, so you can't use the excuse that they're, you know, they're only allowed for elementary schools or younger children, because there are, you know, same age groups at each school.
So what I would like to do is follow up on the previous letter, add these pieces of information that we just discussed in tonight, and once again, write to Mass Highway and ask for a little bit of help. If you're okay with that, we'll draft something up and see about having something ready for the next school committee meeting.
Nope.
Thanks, folks. Okay Kelly, new business.
Item one, certainly with great pleasure that we bring you this year's district slideshow showcasing our students and schools, we released it a bit early this year, because we wanted it out before town meeting, of course, but I felt that it deserved the formality of being introduced at a school committee meeting, so if you would endure four minutes of pictures of our students and great music this year, I must say, it would be greatly appreciated, and it really does showcase all the great things that we're doing at our schools.
Our pleasure, please.
Pictures tell a thousand words.
Do we need the lights off again, as it is...
Sure.
Can somebody get the lights, please?
I'd like to thank Mike McKeckren for helping put all of this together and also all the staff that had their iPhones and cameras with them throughout the year. It's nice to have virtually thousands of pictures to select and showcase what our schools and students are doing.
Did Mike pull it all together and-
Yes, he did.
Hang it for us, please.
I will.
Anybody want to add anything? Have you seen any of those?
What, was I in any of them? Oh, yeah, there's a picture from a high school quiz show, preliminary rounds. We didn't make it through, but it was a valiant effort.
Financial update?
Steve?
Yep, you have information in your packets. You have two year-to-date monthly updates, one that's through March and then another one that's through April. I just thought I'd give you both so you could see the difference between March and April if you had any questions. We continue to be on track, on target with our expenditures for this year, other than, you know, other than those accounts that we've noted in the past. And we will spend all of the appropriated money and I'll be more than glad to answer any questions. You also have in your packet a update on the food service operations, again, year-to-date through, um, sorry, year-to-date through March as well. Again, there's, there's no big surprise here. Again, we will probably end that, end the year with a deficit in that account, which we'll cover through other accounts. But there's the update. I'll be more than glad to answer questions, provide additional information.
Are we still seeing a slight increase, or not a slight increase, a slight decrease in what that deficit will be?
In the food service?
Yes. I know a couple of months ago-
No, we, we still think it's probably going to be in the eighteen to twenty thousand dollar range. But again, we're doing everything we can to mitigate that for this year. And I had to get with my food service, the food service operations director and touch base for, through the end of the year to make sure we have enough inventory on hand to be able to meet the needs. But if we can deplete, if we can use some of our inventory and not be buying stuff, then we're going to look at that and that might help reduce some of that loss as well, so.
Great, great. Mike, the reason I ask that is because I'm concerned moving into next year, we want to make sure that we mitigate this as much as possible. And I think we all know that we've been pretty active in trying to address those steps. But I'm wondering, I'll jump the gun here, I know we've discussed this extensively at summer school last year. I don't know if that's, if that's necessary at this point, but I think it's something that we should be aware of, that it's not a problem just for this year's budget, but we should be.
Right, and that's, school committee approved additional funding out of the appropriation for next year to help cover the food service program. So we're constantly in a deficit and constantly trying to find money in other parts of the budget, so the school committee did support that for next year. You know, we're also, again, looking, ways to mitigate that. We're looking at ways to increase participation. We've started a salad bar, at least on a trial basis at the high school. We have the equipment now for the middle school, so I think that's going to start soon. So hopefully that will help increase the participation and also the excitement that the kids have for eating healthy food, so.
Great.
Yep. And one more, if I may. I just want to let everybody know that bus registration, oh, sorry.
There's some big swings in here. I know September, purchasing supplies, there's a lot of, beginning of the school year purchase, I understand that. December, we have a big swing negative also. Of course, December is negative swing.
In the food service account?
Yes.
We may have been stocking up and rebuilding our inventory, so we had stock on hand for January, February. Then I'll have to go back and look, there may have been, oh, I don't see one, so I'll have to go back and look specifically.
In March, we have a big upswing though, four thousand in positive.
Yeah, so sometimes it's cyclical as we buy supplies, we buy in bulk, and we buy for a couple of months at a time.
I can see, maybe you did something like that in December, but January was positive, probably a small seventeen hundred, eight hundred in February, but then forty-one hundred in March.
Right.
When did the snack bar start?
The salad bar?
Salad bar, sorry.
February or March?
Were we able to attribute any spike to that?
No, because we've only opened it at the high school like one day a week.
Okay.
Yeah, nothing significant. Yeah, nothing significant. You know, there could also be some timing differences in here when we're getting reimbursement-
I was going to say-
-from federal government for reimbursements. Sometimes that comes in a month behind, and sometimes we don't get it until we get two in one month and that kind of stuff.
Right.
So there is some of that.
It's mostly responsible.
Yeah, there is some of that factor.
There's also fewer school days in February and December, I would say.
Right, there's vacation days and vacation weeks and things like that.
If it was proportional to a vacation week, you could buy. Portions aren't there though for that, I didn't understand it mitigates. All right, what do you think, folks? What other school districts have you looked at to see the ones that are making money?
Well, they are few and far between now with the new regs. The people that were making money aren't making money now. And it's been a topic of conversation around every superintendent table that I've been at the past year and a half. And people are obviously coming to the terms, coming to terms with the fact that we still want to offer quality food service programs, but we're not going to be breaking even anymore. We're going to, we're going to try. Some systems have actually increased costs in the hope of gaining the cost back by hiring gourmet chefs. But that's a, a big jump and for a limited return. So there are some places that have actually done that. Certainly isn't my recommendation at this point in time, but that's what some districts are trying to do, to try to mitigate what we're seeing. It's not as if, you know, when you look at our actual participation rates, we're still selling a lot of meals every day in this district. And we've, we've done everything we can in terms of surveying students and asking what their preferences are and what they like in their meals, what is a meal and what isn't a meal, et cetera. So we have noticed some increased participation, but it, it really isn't something that I could say that is going to take care of the deficit. May it bring four thousand dollars worth of efficiencies in a year, potentially. Chloe?
Just the main thing that I've heard from other kids at school is that they feel like they're paying the same price or more, like I think lunch prices went up this year, maybe it was last year? I don't know. But they pay, they feel like they are getting less food than they used to, and I'm assuming that that's probably because of the requirements where you can only have a certain amount of calories in the meals, but then it's, it's like the same food, it's the same like chicken nuggets, but you just have less chicken nuggets. And so that's like something that a lot of people have been kind of mad about, I guess, or like disappointed. And so I was wondering if maybe, if it would be worth it to get like slightly higher cost foods than, you know, whatever chicken nuggets it is, and then be able to give like a little bit more just like volume-wise for the same amount of calories, you know? I think it's maybe something that people are worried about, especially at the high school.
It's a good suggestion because it is all hanging on the, the caloric intake.
Yeah.
So if we can somehow find lower calorie foods that we can use and create larger portions, that might be a good way of trying to deal with it as well. It's a good suggestion. I remember years ago, it's about five years ago now, at a school committee meeting in another district, we had a fifty-five minute discussion on the fact that our cafeterias weren't making old traditional style grilled cheese sandwiches. I don't know how awful that actually was. And, I mean, they taste really well, but unfortunately, they don't meet regulations anymore in terms of nutritional guidelines that we're supposed to be enforcing at the school level. So this isn't new. It's been gradually tightening up as, as time has gone on. Now, we're just trying to find that, that balance.
Appreciate your choice of words too about enforcing things in school when it comes to what they eat. Good words.
Some of the new regu-
I know you don't think I'm a wise guy in that one.
Some of the new regulations were also postponed for a year, so some of them haven't taken full effect yet either, so.
All right.
I mean, we, there are options. And as a, as a school committee, I mean, we're processing what you said, PJ. If we want to turn the money away, we can do what we want. But then I would venture to guess that there are a number of members in this community that feel that we're on the right track too.
We need to turn the money away.
Turn the federal reimbursement away.
Federal reimbursement away.
Oh, I'm not saying give them money. No, 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 misunderstanding. Eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand dollars. We're a small enough district, that's enough change for other things we could be using it for. So a solution is what needs to be found, not elimination of programs, not the elimination of food, not the reduction in the size of what, portions, so that the students said, well, we're not going to pay anything for that because it's not worth it, am I? And we brag about that we're teaching them many things. One of them economists, to our economics, and perhaps one of them is to be good consumers, and they don't like the product, and they're not going to purchase the product. So let's say we're successful in teaching them something in that regard. So the thing is, we need to find some solutions. Eighteen thousand dollars is too much to be losing, I believe. And I'm not going to preach on this. Can we, do you guys mind if we bring this up again on the next school committee meeting? And maybe put some brain bites where we can figure out, we're not going to solve the problem, I know that, but-
One bite at a time.
If you like it.
Oh, boy.
At the very least, I'll, I'll go with that. Is that okay, folks? All right, thank you. All right, buses.
Yeah, so bus registration is open. Information is on the website. You can register online, you can pay online should you choose to do so. So we will start getting the word out through the schools, through the newsletters, through the community TV. The registration is open, I just wanted to let school committee know that.
And we've not raised this in a very long time.
We haven't raised the bus fee in, I don't know the exact number of years, but four or five years.
Very long time. All right, unanimous like it, we know that, so let's not commiserate too much over it. Other than, it depends on the work involved in this, Kelly. If it's too labor intensive, it'd be nice to know, you know, how many families are capping out. And if there's any kind of trend. It's going to be what it is. So children's school, they're going to cap out therefore, they're not going to pay anymore. And I can only presume most of them are one to two students that use the bus. This people require no one.
So are you asking us to, to take a look at that, or?
Use your judgment on that, Kelly. If you think there's too much work involved, I don't, I see marginal benefit to it. So if there's a lot of work, it's not worth the benefit.
All when we look at our demographics, you're right. But we will take a, a look.
So you can look at the data and see if it's easily possible, or whatever the right word is.
All right, so the point thing, information's out there, folks realize it, and registration's on.
Correct, and we encourage everyone to register early.
And item four.
Does anybody have an opportunity to read any of this from Department of Education? We know about the evaluations and we've been working with our teachers here based on state law. There's just, at the federal level, there's work ongoing right now to have some sort of federal standards of assault for teacher evaluations. I don't know if as a committee, if we want to even address it, suck it up. And most things probably tied to money some way, shape, or form. I don't know, Kelly, at some point, you probably want to look at a, at the burden of places administratively. We already know what the state rules are doing as far as some of the additional burdens that the mandates bring along. So there's costs associated with this, and right now, I didn't read at least, at least even sweeten the pot, that there'd be some money coming down the pike with those guidelines.
And this article was illustrative of the fact that we're not the only entity that's getting hit by federal mandates. I mean, this particular article deals with colleges and universities, and they are now setting standards across our nation for teacher preparatory program.
All right, so the point thing, information's out there, folks realize it and registration's on.
Correct, and we encourage everyone to register early. Item four.
Do everybody have an opportunity to read any of this from Department of Education? We know about the evaluations and we've been working with our teachers here based on state law. There's just, at the federal level, there's work ongoing right now to have some sort of federal standards of assault for teacher evaluations. I don't know if as a committee, if we want to even address it, suck it up. And most things probably tied to money some way, shape or form. But I don't know Kelly, at some point, you probably want to look at the burden of places administratively. We already know what the state rules are doing as far as some additional burdens that the mandates bring along. So, there's costs associated with this and right now, I didn't read at least, at least even sweeten the pot that there'd be some money coming down the pike with those guidelines.
Yeah. And this article was illustrative of the fact that we're not the only entity that's getting hit by federal mandates. I mean, this particular article deals with colleges and universities and they are now setting standards across our nation for teacher preparatory programs. So, the colleges now are undergoing, are currently undergoing some pretty rapid changes as we speak and within the next two years, some of their programs are going to look quite different. And some of that is a positive. I don't want to appear to be negative on this at all, but it just is, to me, it's very interesting that federal regulations seem to be coming more and more of our lives every year.
And leaving the debate out with the efficacy of some of these programs are good or bad, dismiss that for the moment. Budget impact.
Most definitely.
So, would folks say, well, when I was in school, well, when we were in school, at least a couple of us at this table, there was a federal government someplace down in Washington in those days and that was about it. Very different organization nowadays, so.
And even, I mean, it impacts the budget in terms of dollars, but also has a dramatic impact on the way business is conducted in the buildings day in and day out. I mean, not too long ago, the teacher went into his or her classroom, basically it was their fiefdom and they just took care of business as they saw fit to a large degree. And now, they don't do that and they're integrated across vertically and horizontally, across the building and between buildings. And that's been going on for a while, but now you're seeing, again, like you just said, now they're expected to come out of school with these standards in place and it's affecting how they go about doing their business and it takes time and effort beyond the classroom to prepare to teach in that manner. It's a different way of doing business and, you know, allowing them time to prepare and giving them the right environment to be able to do that and it is challenging as well.
Very true. Just want to add anything?
Yeah, it's one of these changes, I think, in education that a lot of people have been howling for, for a very long time for modernizing the way we do public education in this country. And to Kelly's point, it's not all of these changes are bad, but it's the impact this has on us from a budget perspective that I'm most worried about. Because I do think some of the, some of these programs, some of these standards, this one and also generally speaking, are positive steps, but the impact it has on our school district and many other school districts is a negative simply because we're not being given any assistance in getting this work done. And that's both from a budget standpoint and then also from the administrative standpoint and from the teacher's standpoint, the way they spend their time is completely changing and they're going to need to spend a lot of time adjusting to these new programs. And I think we all acknowledge that that's a pretty severe burden on them.
Okay, Superintendent Report please.
Chloe's last, I believe, school update or are you going to be at some other meetings this year?
Hopefully, this is the last one.
Hopefully?
Well, I don't know, I've got a lot going on.
Fine, away with you. Just giving me a rough time.
All right, and I'm going to read this off my phone because I'm unprofessional, can't get my computer to work. So, the only thing I have right now is from Russell Street. So, May fifteenth, there'll be the art show from six to seven thirty PM. May twenty-second, there is the math and literacy night from six to seven thirty PM. On May twenty-ninth, the fifth grade band and choral students from Mrs. Brewer's, Mrs. Tukana and Mrs. Raposa's classes have a concert at six thirty PM. And then at the high school, the awards, the academic awards night, I believe, is next Thursday. And the art show was on Tuesday and there was a lot of really incredible art that people have been making, so that was really exciting to see. And that's it.
Thank you. Item two, our personnel update. As you can see, we have a few people in and out as a result of various things that are happening. Again, it's a reality that we're not a static organization, neither with children nor with staff. And you can see here that we have had some considerable change. What is comforting to me as a superintendent is even though we have changes like this happening in our district, education is still going on strong and people are coming and going and we're holding the bar where it needs to be. And that's a credit to everybody making sure that happens. It's not easy, transition isn't easy, you know, as well as I do, even on the school committee, when you get a new player, you have a new team. It's no different than when you're in a school. And we have had some changes in staff and as a result, we've made some adjustments and have done very well of managing the turnover that we have.
I have a quick question here.
Yes, please.
In terms of turnover, I've noticed this year, and maybe this is just because it's my first year doing this, is there a slightly high turnover in people's services this year? Or is that just the age of the staff or where they are in their professional careers?
Well, there are two things that happen and it's not consistent, but depending on the position that they hold, we have people that are in our higher end positions that are looking for career advancements and they're getting the tools and the experience and opportunities arise, they move on. We have other individuals that are continuing their education, they're in a bit of an intermediate position and they're looking for that next position, especially our head assistants. We're very blessed in this district to have head assistants with very high qualifications. A lot of our head assistants have at least a bachelor's degree. And, you know, I've been fortunate in my career because most districts I've been in, that's been the case, but that's not the norm. So, they're, you know, looking for something different, getting some experience in schools and they're waiting for that position that they really want to enter to become available. That's what you're seeing here. Now, as a leader, it's important to reinforce the fact that, you know, part of our job is to make people come the best that they can be, but that doesn't mean we keep them forever. It means that we create opportunities for them to make decisions and they become more marketable as time goes on. And that's a sign of a very effective organization.
It's one of the sad realities of having a highly qualified staff is that sometimes, particularly in a district of this size, there's not always room in district for them to keep moving up. And these people who are very, I think, very motivated and very passionate about their jobs and want to keep moving up, sometimes need to move out to be able to do that.
Very true.
But that there's seventeen moves here, only four leave the district.
Right, right. Most of them are just temporarily indisposed, so to speak.
Mine was more of a comment throughout the year in terms of people's services.
I mean, this year, for the size of the district, it's incredible the number of our staff that are beginning families or adding to their families. And that's been a lot of our turnover this year, so that's great. And it's probably the highest we've seen it since I've been here. Certainly it's cyclical to a certain degree, but this year, we're going to have a lot of new additions to the families of staff.
All right, thank you.
The next meeting, or sorry, item three, district determined measures. I wanted to have an opportunity for the school committee to have a brief update on where we're headed with district determined measures. And as you recall, district determined measures are a mandate of educator evaluation and it requires that every teacher has two assessments that they will use for a two-period duration to determine the impact on student learning. Now, bear in mind that twenty-five percent of our subjects are MCAS tested or PARC tested. I'm not sure what word to use at this point in time. I'll probably go with PARC. But it, I'm getting the stare. It really shows you how much though is not related to state standardized tests. When seventy-five percent of the subjects that we teach aren't tested, that's a phenomenal workload that our teachers have and our districts have to prepare these assessments and get them into place. And it's not as if we don't have assessments, but we have to now look at these assessments and choose the best ones that are going to show growth over a period of time. As somebody who is a little anal in terms of statistics, for me, it's been a bit of an adjustment. And when we look at MCAS tests, MCAS tests have a standard deviation of seventeen. We're looking at a program that I've used for many years called NWEA, N-W-E-A, out of Oregon. And they have a standard deviation of three to five. So, we're taking a look at that test, not as a DDM. It may become a DDM, but we're taking a look at that test more as a means of seeing where our students are growing cognitively from year to year and during the year, tailoring instruction according to the areas of strength and the areas of challenge. So, we're, it would allow us to go into more of an individualization of programming and it would also help our teachers increase their toolbox of instructional strategies. So, we're at the experimental stage at this point in time determining what we're going to do and where. We're thinking of grade two to eight as a pilot as we move forward. But you have to remember, even our nurses need two DDMs. Our speech pathologists, every single certified staff member in the school that is instructing students need two DDMs. It is quite a mammoth undertaking. We have a pilot year next year and that's going to give us an opportunity to submit some DDMs and see how well they're working before we dive into them because you can't change them very quickly because you need that two years of evidence. So, when you commit to a DDM, you're going to have to commit to it for two years before you revise it. And then I just finished talking about standard deviation and how do you calculate the standard deviation on a local assessment? Isn't going to happen. So, there are a lot of things that we're trying to come to terms with, not only us, but you know, as a district to be district specific, we are. Another challenge as we move forward is teacher evaluations are to be done prior to the end of May. When do we receive MCAS results? Not in May, not in June, September. So, we're obviously anxiously awaiting for some further direction because if you have an MCAS subject, so to speak, you have to use that MCAS as a DDM. So, you can understand why we're in deep discussions in terms of how we're going to pull all this together and meet the laws that are in place. Having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Jerry Lynn, but just one last comment. It is exciting though that we have an opportunity to work as groups and teams and take a look at our, not only our vertical alignment, but our horizontal alignment as we're developing these local DDMs. So, the results are positive of these situations. Jerry Lynn.
Thank you Superintendent Clancy for emphasizing most of the points in my presentation. It shows that administrators and members of the curriculum council have been involved in discussions. I would like to backtrack a little and give a slight review of some of the terminology, the lexicon of DDM is part of the new educator evaluation landscape in Massachusetts and really just continue the themes that you heard from the superintendent and that I and the administrators presented in the initial overview that we gave to school committee. And what are DDMs? Where do they fit in? What role do they play in the educator evaluation system? And how are they made meaningful in Littleton? And how do we make meaning out of Littleton, of DDMs here in terms of making our planning process meaningful and worthwhile and a adaption and revision of our current practice, not just a checklist of something imposed from the state? Forgive me if I read from the state definitions, but district determined measures are defined as measures of student learning, growth, achievement related to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, Massachusetts vocational technical education frameworks or other relevant frameworks that are comparable across grade or subject levels district wide. These measures may include, but shall not be limited to portfolios, approved commercial assessments, district developed pre and post units, tests, course assessment and capstone projects. So, a major takeaway from this is the key phrase, district determines. There's a wide range of assessments that a district can choose from in order to do what the superintendent said, measure student growth. And that is a second independent rating that is part of the teacher evaluation framework. This year, ed eval has been a daunting task. Massachusetts and Littleton has been involved in implementing the first rating, the summative performance rating. School committee's involved in that process. The second rating, which Littleton and other districts who are not RTT districts are looking at this year and that is selecting and identifying DDMs. So, we've pushed that this spring and we have been involved in a process that, as is the leadership style in Littleton, is collaborative. We've been involved in the administrative council, the elementary and secondary curriculum councils have been the venue. I reported to you in February where we would plan and research state guidelines, exemplars, what other districts are doing and take a look at both commercial, open source and local assessments that can serve as DDMs. Another part of the review of the terminology, as the superintendent indicated, is that an educator-student impact rating is based on two years of data trends and patterns, at least two measures. And where the state measures exist in approximately twenty to twenty-five percent of, across grade level and subject areas, the state measures, MCAS student growth percentile need to be utilized. So, that's the review of the terminology and the regulations. Since we reported to you in February, Littleton's joint committee of administrators and LEA representatives have come to a draft agreement on what really is an adaptation. We've taken most of the DESE model contract language on district determined measures and student impact ratings and we have come to an agreement on that aspect of the work on DDMs. For identifying, selecting and implementing DDMs, we've had that collaborative approach. That's coming attractions.
That's later on.
That's later on. We, the curriculum councils have been the venue for research, for taking a look at what are the guidelines, what are the implementation briefs from DESE exemplars across the state. And those curriculum councils have also been the venue where we've established our own, Littleton's own sense of priorities and process workflow and guidelines for, basically a two-pronged approach to DDMs that the superintendent set forth early in the process. And that guidance, that two-pronged approach has involved researching a broad-based computer adaptive measure that could be used across grades and subject matters and disciplines. And then the second approach, second approach has been taking a look at our internally-developed subject-specific and core-specific measures or assessments that can be repurposed to meet DDM criteria. He began to mention NWEA. That has been, we've researched a number of computer adaptive assessments. NWEA is the one that we're focusing on now. We've had two demonstrations, two webinars, a trial. And again, in a collaborative spirit, we're looking at that next year as a pilot year to see if this formative assessment, computer-based formative assessment battery of tests, teachers are comfortable with using as a DDM. Also, as part of- Also, as part of framing this process as meaningful and manageable and as an extension of current practice, I would emphasize about NWEA, what the superintendent did, that even if the grade levels do not elect to utilize NWEA as a DDM, it will be a refinement and extension of our practice in terms of differentiating instruction, expanding teachers' toolbox to differentiate instruction for students who are struggling and students that are achieving beyond grade-level expectations. So then the second prong of our approach to DDMs is to modify current assessments to meet DDM criteria. And today was actually an important day in our department-based planning because today was a day when we had grade six to 12 meetings. And I participated, I went this afternoon and went into three different meetings, touch base with three different departments, and read some of the proposals that have been submitted and heard some of the discussions. And as part of making this process meaningful, we had a very interesting discussion on repurposing and extending writing prompts, writing to text, argumentative, informative, persuasive writing in the ELA department. I heard from teachers from grade six to grade 12 talking about an initial assessment that students, two months out of Russell Street, are dealing with to an AP-style writing prompt. The science department, it also reflects not making this another checklist set forth by the state. Number of teachers across grade levels in science are having pre- and post-tests on academic vocabulary in science. That's reflective of training that teachers across content areas got on the common core state standards and taking a look at tiers of vocabulary and academic vocabulary. So it was very, very impressive the way, this is something that I know myself and Dr. Brinko emphasized when we spoke to you last about DDMs. In order for them to be valid, in order for them to be rigorous, in order for them to be content-aligned, we have the eyes of the administrator and the teachers coming together to take a look at making those reflect key content area skills and knowledge that teachers feel should be evaluated. The next big date or timetable we need to meet is the June 1st timetable. And as the superintendent said, this is a daunting task. It's been a daunting task for the whole state. And the commissioner, the state DESE, has responded to district pushback that in order for this to be something done in a thoughtful, meaningful way, districts need time to pilot and to select and to implement and to develop plans for determining and measuring student growth. Because a DDM is not just a one-time assessment. And so the timetables have changed a number of times. And this June 1 submission is a two-part submission. The first part is we identify for those subjects and those teachers the DDMs that we feel we would like to implement next year. And the second is a complete, well-thought-out extension request for those grades and subject areas where we have not identified DDMs and an explanation of what we're doing. Superintendent mentioned school nurses. We are part of a regional curriculum roundtable and we sent our school nurses, Dr. Detweiler and I, sent nurses to a regional roundtable on developing DDMs for school nurses. The roundtable just happened. That would be something they would say next year, this regional group of school nurses is working on developing a DDM. So it was this type of thing that we would submit to the state. We talked about NWEA as a pilot. We would say, we looked at two or three different computer-based adaptive tests. We chose, you know, we decided not to go with X, Y, and Z and we're going to pilot next year and NWEA. And that is what we're looking for to do with our June submission. Retooling or repurposing current local assessments in order for them to be valid, comparable across grade levels involves those plans for determining student growth from the beginning of the year to a point in the year that is manageable in order to gather the data and use it for educator evaluation. And that's basically where we are now and looking at, as other districts, the central administrators are part of regional roundtables, the superintendent's involvement, superintendent meetings across the state, districts across the state are scrambling on this. And so, you know, hear us loud and clear that asking for an extension is not lack of preparation. Districts across the state are asking for extensions on a number of different positions in order for this to be a well-thought-out process.
If we're going to put time and energy into something, we're going to do it right. And a typical example is if we had a student go into a Spanish class for the first time and never seen Spanish in their life, and as an initial assessment, the teacher gave the final exam. Why wouldn't you expect growth? So we're not willing to accept that type of approach to the development of DDMs. We want a meaningful pre-assessment and a meaningful post-assessment. And in order to have a meaningful pre-assessment, we need to be able to find out where a student is at in terms of having a reasonable expectation and knowledge base to begin that course, not whether or not they have enough knowledge to not be in the course. And that's where we're different than some districts. We're being very methodical and we're being very careful as we move along. And in the end, it's going to make us stronger, but we're going to go through a few growing pains, obviously, along the way. Adaptive, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with assessments, but the assessments that we see in the New England states typically are static or fixed assessments. There are assessments called adaptive assessments that actually has a student take a test and throughout taking the test, they calibrate where that student is and then they determine where that student needs to go cognitively. NWEA is such a test and that's why it's so powerful in giving teachers the additional toolboxes that they could utilize to individualize instruction and know exactly where their students had strengths and where they had challenges. And that's one of the reasons why we're actually looking into this as serious as we are. And you know, I've used NWEA since 1998 in school districts and I've seen remarkable results. But like anything else, it's something that needs to evolve as we evolve as a district. And it was time to take a serious look at a different way of doing business. Questions?
Thank you for that, for your opinion. That's a lot of useful information. And I think we all know that DDMs are such a huge part of the ed eval process that we're going through. And also, I think, one of the most important because it gives us that flexibility as a district, but there are some challenges with that as well. So first, I had actually, I thought it was funny that you mentioned the speech pathologist position in particular because on Sunday I was talking to a speech pathologist from another district at my church and she was explaining that she was struggling to come up with appropriate DDMs because her, the students in her, you know, under her jurisdiction were not comparable to one another. And so she's trying to do a lot of different, she's not going to treat student A the same as student B, the same as student C. It doesn't make sense to. Not just because she's not teaching the same content, she's not going through the same practices. Some of them are very well-spoken but might have issues in terms of social behavior. Others totally get it but might have a speech impediment. Completely different genres of what you're trying to do, both trying to show growth. How are we able to handle that? And I understand it's not necessarily, it's not a perfect answer to that because we're not the ones writing the regulations. But are we at least trying to assist these staff members in helping them figure out how best to approach the DDM process? Are we giving them the support they need to make use of a system that might make sense for classroom educators but might not for special educators?
And we are. The reaching out to other districts is something that we needed to do so that people that have the same experiential base could get together and make sense of what needs to be done and what would be genuine, genuine and helpful to them as we move forward. I mean, you've heard me speak that the educator evaluation system has a lot of strengths, but it has some challenges. Like anything, you, you have to accentuate the strengths and you have to take a look at those challenges and make them work. And if it means tweaking the system on a different road, that's what we'll do because it has to be meaningful. We don't do work just for the sake of doing work. It has to be directly related to helping students learn. And I'm confident that we'll get there. We have a great team and we go about it in a thoughtful, methodical way.
Here's the deadline to have this done.
Our first submission is June 1st for our pilots for next year.
That's what it's due, that's when you're going to submit?
That's when we are submitting.
Okay, you said you're going to receive an extension. So what are our suspenses and what extensions are you going to ask for?
We don't know which ones we're asking for. We're just getting the proposals now from the grade, the departments, putting them together between now and June 1st. And on June 1st, we will submit. What we have identified to use next year and what our plans are for those areas that have not been identified, how we're going to use our time to pilot, research, and select.
So you don't know you want an extension yet?
We will. We know.
Well, there's another component here.
Here's where I want to go down the road here, is how can we help here? So when you approach the state and say we need an extension, does it need to come from you, does it need to come from the school committee? Is it going to be a consortium of superintendents trying to come together? Let's talk the business part of this. Put the education aside now. We've got all that. I want to know how we're going to go about this.
Right now, until we have further information, my impression is that if we need it, we're going to get it. And just at a district level, if we're going to have an extension on anything, in my opinion, we need an extension on the whole thing. I do not philosophically believe that if we're going to go into this venture, it should be staggered. It should be all or nothing because we're going to have a two-year window from the time we start to start using data to measure impact on student learning. I don't want to be put in a situation where a third of our teachers are being measured and two-thirds aren't.
I'm not challenging whether to get it.
No, 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 no.
What I'm trying to say is, what do we need to do? I concur 100%.
Right.
If you're telling us you need an extension, we're going to work and help you. What do we need to do to do that?
Stand by. And if things don't go down the right road, we'll be talking more.
With the folks who are trying to help you educate the kids?
The submission template itself is a two-part submission template. It's basically to the educators, the superintendent, director of curriculum, we submit identifying those that we recognize are in place for next year, those that aren't.
Now you don't know.
Next three weeks, we'll know whether we fall in, we'll know which ones we got in place.
So our June meeting, you'll have an idea?
Yes.
The fortune teller should disclose by then.
And the request on how we can help get that extension is necessary?
How we read the template is that, and when I've talked to the ed eval team at DESE, if you have a cogent, you put down cogent reasons for requesting a request and an overview of the process that you utilize this year to research, pilot, and implement, the extension will be granted. What is not granted by DESE is a blanket extension. Well, we're not, we don't know where.
What I'm saying here is this committee will help you.
Yes, we get that 100%. We just need to understand the process before you can help us at this point in time. That's what we're waiting for. I have a meeting on the 19th with the DESE and hopefully I'll have some more solid answers.
And the superintendent and administration are going to state-level convening on ed eval at the end of May. And one of the topics is DDMs.
Okay. Alex.
Thanks. So one of the issues that I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot about with the other regional and state superintendents and directors of curriculum, how do you measure, how do you get a DDM for a PE class or for an art class? Again, these are not generally considered regular education.
It's the same way.
Same way.
It's exactly the same way. I would be emphatic. I'm emphasizing that it's exactly the same way. In fact, PE was one of our pilots this year that was most successful. And it was using an instrument called FitnessGram. There's performance assessments, art, music, portfolio, demonstrations. I mean, this is the time for the other disciplines and grade levels to shine and show their impact on student.
Excellent. Because before we've only had MCAS.
Well, you've looked at, through the accountability lens, you've looked at ELA and math in certain grade levels.
But we haven't had, previously, we haven't been able to do this sort of assessment now in some of those other areas. And what I'm hearing is we are able to.
We are. And the chair of the school committee was talking last time I presented about local control. And I just want to emphasize again that part of the quality control is district determined.
And you have to remember, folks, what are we currently doing? We assess students. It's not that different than what we're being asked to do. We're being asked to track it differently. But when a student comes into a classroom, we assess where they're at and at the end of the class, we have another assessment of where they've gone. And for that, this is a little simplistic, but all you need is point A and point B, maybe it's five miles. How long does it take them to run five miles at the beginning of the class or the year? How long does it take them to run five miles three-quarters of the way through the class? The benchmarks are in place. We just have to solidify them and deal with them that way.
That's helpful. And then in terms of the KEDA, I guess since we're looking two to eight, we have one program we're looking at piloting. For kindergartners in first grade, how are we, because I know something you've talked about and I share this concern, is how we evaluate and assess students at that age level where we don't want to, it's not productive.
Well, we have a plethora of assessments that are utilized at the early elementary level. We have a number of benchmark assessments for reading. We were fine on looking at, you know, our DIBELS and DIBELS Next assessments for reading. Our teachers are well-versed in measures that are utilized across the state in reading. There's, we don't find that issue in the early grades. It's not, you know, it's not an MCAS-tested school, but it is not a school without a strong, strong battery of assessments to indicate student learning.
And does that include, rather than those, you know, there's a test that you're going to help, that you see at the higher levels, at the lower levels?
It's more individualistic. But you have to remember, Alex, that the younger the age, the greater the margin of error.
Right.
And we need to take that into account. Kindergarten readiness tests have a 50% reliability rate, 50%, because the kids are young. And we wouldn't expect any different, so.
Great. And just my last question. In terms of the working with other districts in the region and in the state, will that at all, is there any, you mentioned earlier that there's a limited ability to analyze statistically because we have more local control? That's a trade-off I'm willing to take, but if we can supplement that somehow or mitigate that negative impact somehow, either by working with other local districts or statistically similar districts with, you know, using the same instrument to measure, does that make sense or is that something that's being talked about?
That would be somewhat of a dream as we move forward. That's partly why we requested that fully professional development date, so that we can start making those connections and start having those conversations.
We're not there yet.
Okay, we're not there.
But that's sort of, so maybe not this two-year cycle, but maybe in the future?
So, regional school district, it's easy to do it, because they all are under one umbrella. It's a little different when they're separate, but it can be done.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have two more minutes.
Yes.
I wanted to just add something quickly to the agenda. As you know, we've been reviewed a lot this year. We've had a NIASC review, we've had a comprehensive program review, and we've also had a Title I review. So, we've had a lot of new people walking through our district. And I'm really pleased to be able to announce, and this is pertinent to Jerry Lynn and what Jerry Lynn does with us, one of the many things that she does, our Title I program review report came back, and they had no recommendations, not at all, which is fantastic, because they usually have some. And to give you an idea, there were 58 districts that were reviewed this year, and average findings were zero to 14 per district. Total average was 3.5 per district. So, you know, it gives you an idea that this is, in fact, a rarity. And they actually look at a number of areas: fiscal procedures, parent guardian communications, program design and evaluation, data collection and management, and opportunity and equal educational access. So, it is a thorough review. I've probably been through four of them in my career. And this is the first time in my career that we haven't had one recommendation anyway. So, congratulations, Jerry Lynn, for your job well done.
It's not something that I did alone. Teachers, since last year, we have been involved with program evaluations. We had teachers involved in focus groups. We've involved, we had, you know, talked about change in a district and people coming and going. We had change in service delivers. We had change in principalship. And I would be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Farady and Mr. Bizidlo and Kelly Rogers for their help in the Title I program review and the Title I teachers at Shaker Lane and Russell Street, because way back April of last year, we were involved in the needs assessment and program evaluation. And the folks at DESE complimented our documents. So, it has been a process that we took seriously. So, I thank them for their help.
Anyone want to say anything? Great.
Right, great.
Jerry, this is fantastic. You've got modesty and graciousness in spreading credit amongst the various staff is commendable, but it's also your leadership that got us here. This is extraordinarily good results.
Well, it's different than 2007.
Well done. Just say yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, item four. Next meeting, we're going to have our annual retirement celebration. We have three teachers retiring at the end of this year. We will begin their retirement from at 6:00 PM at the high school, and then we'll come back here at 7:00 PM for a regular meeting.
Super, look forward to that. It's unfortunate, not some of these, these folks are leaving us.
This might be a good time, too, if you would like to mention budget before we go on.
Budget.
Well, in terms of our budget pass.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because I have numbers on my mind, there's something else I'm going to be talking to. So, I will lead into that with this. Yes, you're talking about town meetings.
Town meeting, yes.
Before getting there, you may recall, some months back, we wrote both to Representative Osiero and Senator Eldridge about our concerns and asking certainly for help when it comes to budget issues. Senator Eldridge has written back, and you may sense some frustration in some of my remarks earlier this evening. Senator Eldridge highlights some of the causes of those frustrations that rule, and it's not just our school district, but across the state. I'm just going to quote a line from his letter. "Since fiscal year 2001, funding for Chapter 70 education rate has decreased," and it was decreased, "by 8%. Early education and care funding by 28% and higher education by 31%." That's downward. So, over the last 13 years, we've seen those decreases. We talked earlier about some of the additional functions that we're expected to do as a school district, whether they're federal mandates, state mandates, or wherever it may be, whether it comes out of case law or statute law, new regulations, new guidance from DESE, whatever they may be. These are all additive to the costs, and then we're seeing that from a state level, local aid, in essence, is what it all boils down to, is downward. So, where the high mark on this is, is what our staff is doing for our department here in the district. And you all need to take a heck of a lot of credit for that. We highlighted Jerry with Title I. It's the academics, so we won't know MCAS for this year until September. But certainly, we've seen a lot of the objective measures. And you talk about, and people concerned about teaching to the test, 75%, so three-quarters is not tested, and three-quarters is being learned as we go through each school day and through the school year. So, take it back, please, principals, to your teachers and staff. Certainly, I'm very appreciative in that some years ago in the Air Force, we came up with the saying, "Do more with less." If you follow that to the logical conclusion, you do everything with nothing. You're doing a heck of a lot more with less, and thank you. As to Kelly's real prompt there, town meeting did take place this past Monday. I think folks realize that. The entire town budget did pass, as did the school budget. So, we're certainly very grateful to the folks of Littleton for taking that affirmative vote that indeed, we're going to be able to go forward and execute in FY '15, even better than we did here in FY '14. So, thank you for all that. Anybody want anything?
What was the plan from the letter?
Would you like to know? Well, the plan is, there is no plan yet. They're working. I mean, when you say the plan, if you, I can certainly cite his work on an act to invest in our communities, where he raised $2 billion by restoring the income tax rate to 5.95% and raising the rate on investment income to 8.95%.
Which would have put more money back into local aid, back into Chapter 70, and also investing in early education.
Well, that's the implicit promise. We'll see what happens. First, you're going to get the taxes raised, and then the money collected. Then, there'll be a determination about how it'll be spent.
Well, the act was, the act that was, there was a, this was a bill that did not pass this past session, and what it did say, it did spill out those investments in transportation and early education, and also in Chapter 70.
I wasn't going to raise the issue of tax increases. You asked me to, so I did.
What I'm trying to look at is, we can't talk about Chapter 70 not increasing and not decreasing, and we can't talk about local aid decreasing and talk about a solution until we talk about revenue.
Oh, I disagree.
Well, we will leave this at tonight, gentlemen, if we're okay with it. If we want to get into a tax, taxation discussion, let's do that elsewhere.
I'm not sure that we do. Yeah.
Let's concentrate on education this evening. And thank you, educators. Okay, no. Interested citizens. Said you had something for us?
Do I have to get up?
Yes, you must get up.
It's the microphone. It's the microphone thing. We want everybody to hear you.
That's true. I do want everybody to hear me. I just wanted to come up, Lisa Boone. I'm coming up as representative from CPAC, the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. Our next monthly meeting is Tuesday evening of next week, and it is an important meeting because we're holding our annual elections for our officer positions. So, we've gotten virtually no input from members yet for nominations, but we do, you know, have to hold our elections every year, and so we're looking to gain some support there. So, and also, we have some, you know, great things happening and continuing to happen with developments. I just got word that at the high school, the group of students that had been pursuing the Best Buddies program, it have officially, Littleton has officially been invited to become a chapter. The students have done a great job and applied. They had to raise money. It really is very exciting. We're thrilled, the CPAC is thrilled, because it's been some years when we brought it up into the district as something we're interested in trying to help pursue. And then, the middle school was fantastic. You know, the health teacher there, Trish Bonacore, really got things sort of started just in the school. It was not an official Best Buddies program, but the students who came out of there are the ones who actually initiated this at the high school level, and it's just a fantastic program. And they're, they just, it's so exciting for parents with children with special needs. So, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the students to finally gain real recognition. It's going, you know, I mean, the district certainly understands, but they have conferences and lots of things they can participate in, and it becomes a little more official for them as far as when they move on after high school. So, I'm really excited for them, and we're going to give all the support we can towards helping develop that program as they need.
Where and what time is your CPAC meeting on Tuesday?
It is Tuesday evening at the high school library at 7:30. Thank you very much. I should have said that. So, that's it.
And Lisa, before you sit down, I just wanted to, and I've said this before, but I was at a case meeting last week, and the directors were going through some of their reports, and our programs for this year, it was kind of a year-end culmination, showed up in their packages. And I, once again, can't thank you enough for reaching out to other communities and bringing in informative programs for our parents. You know, you've, this activity that you've embarked upon has not only helped Littleton parents, but it's reached beyond the community of Littleton. So, thank you very much.
Well, we have been excited that our workshops that we've held this year have really gained a lot more attendance, and they seem to be really effective. So, we're excited that things continue to progress, and that's what we're here for.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, subcommittee reports, PMBC? Budget?
Policy? Just one item. Probably, in the next couple of meetings, we'll bring, probably bring forth a slight update to the bullying policy to reflect the recently, they were enacted a while ago, but to be effective this summer. Most of it's actually probably going to affect the implementation plan. The changes to the policy are not really that significant, because most of it has already been fairly current, but we want to just incorporate the latest language into the policy. So, I have to meet with the superintendent and just go through the last of the language there, and we'll be bringing that in one of the future meetings.
Is that the, including staff in that policy?
No, staff is already there. This is, allows recognition of.
The new categories?
Reporting requirements for a number of incidents, and then recognition of specific subgroups of students. And I think we're going to, right now, leaning towards that, we'll leave the general language there, that I think we want to treat bullying at any level as unacceptable, not just bullying of certain groups of students is unacceptable. So, I think we're going to, I want to just review that language carefully with the superintendent so that we're not setting up something that I don't think is going to be for the whole class of students appropriate.
And another policy we're going to need to resurrect would be the expulsion policy with Chapter 222 coming into effect September 1st. And if you recall, Chapter 222, it just makes it mandatory that students that are expelled be continued to receive education during their period of absence.
Possible budget impact?
Very much so. And I sent an email today, and I'm hoping that we're able to have a second school committee meeting in June, and I proposed a date of June 19th. Purpose for the meeting would be to tie up year-end business. We have Russell Street School that wants to present their new report cards. We have our Director of Personnel Services wanting to update us on the K to 12 continuum, which is going to be, going to involve a bit of tweaking of some of the things we do in special education next year. So, it'd really be advantageous if we could arrange for a second meeting.
I'll see how we wind things up. Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. We will need executive session tonight. It's going to be for negotiations, labor negotiations. Next school committee meeting, as you mentioned, is May 22nd, retiring celebration at 6:00 PM at the high school, at the high school library seminar room for the retirement reception. And then, we will come back here to the police department for the regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Okay, no. So, would you give us a motion, please?
Sure. I make a motion that we adjourn from open session into executive session, no intention to return to open session for the purposes of contract negotiations for added discussion.
Second.
Aye.
So, second to the main, any discussion? I don't think so.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Jerry, want to say this?